All right, 7 o'clock. You can, please stand, remove cover, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, I am nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, approval of the June meeting agenda. Is there any changes? Hearing none?
June agenda or July?
July, it says June, sorry, I'm just reading. July?
I do have one, so for AA, the folks were not able to get their drawing in time, so they're not here. I'm proposing that we pull out the agenda this month and I'll work with them to get it for August.
Okay. Thank you. Any other changes? Okay, can I get a motion to accept the July agenda with the changes stated by Dalton?
So moved.
All right, I got a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda? Any questions, concerns?
Love approval.
All right, can I get a second?
No second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, sheriff's report?
Evening. Uh, attached here, you see the June activity reports from the sheriff's office. Uh, so June 2025, we responded 154 calls for services and, uh, yes, we generated in Oroc Township. Uh, just some notable, um, responses, uh, calls for services. There is two thefts in the township, both of them were at the San Dunes Food and Field gas station, one being a gas drive-off, the other being a shoplift. Uh, the assault that occurred apparently out of that getaway bar, suspect was located and arrested and dealt with. Um, continued problems with the campground and stuff. We dealt with, uh, non-payment, uh, over at campground and they got into a camp, so they were removed. Um, we did deal with some garbage dumping issues, uh, that month, um, not at the usual spots, in the, uh, parking lots of the state land, but, uh, there's a resident in 165, or 165,000 block of 233th Ave, that they've kind of had a couple instances of trash and glass have been dumped here, their driveway, on the road. Uh, so I believe the township was contacted at that point to clean the glass up. Uh, so extra patrol will be, uh, kind of conducted in that area for that. Um, and then kind of a notable case, uh, there was a complaint, uh, basically a welfare check at the Ann Lake Beach, and it was for an intoxicated adult who was caring for a juvenile and watching a juvenile, but he was so intoxicated, he wasn't able to safely care for the juvenile. So that juvenile was, uh, removed, put into, uh, safe care of the relative, and, uh, he was charged for several offenses. Uh, that's kind of the big notable ones, otherwise it was a fairly, uh, busy month as summer usually is for the sheriff's office and different.
Any questions about his report?
What's the paper service?
Uh, paper service, well, generally that's, uh, conducted by a deputy that specifically is out serving papers. Uh, he's, uh, assigned to serve harassment restraining orders, orders for protections, civil, uh, even, yep, yep, civil papers of lawsuits, um, subpoenas for witnesses if they have to appear, or if you witness something. Uh, so that's basically just us, our duty is to serve those papers.
Got it. I assume much higher than the other months.
Yep, and acting the, uh, it kind of varies and there's really no rhyme or reason, it just, I think it was a busy month for that, a lot of paper changes and everything.
Um, where are we with allowing him to have access?
I was just getting to that, I was, that's the next syllable point underneath his report. So no more questions about his, this report? Okay, now we're to the discussion about deputy access, what did we find out?
Yeah, so I spoke with, uh, his name is Matt Albrecht, he works for our, our IT services. Um, so kind of a few options are that we can come up here and we can see if our cards will work on the existing card reader system that you guys have. Um, currently Clear Lake is set up to do the same, however, it is kind of administratively a pain, told from him, to, uh, have your, your guys' system work with our cards, because if there's deputies that are resigned or retired, or new deputies that are hired, we have to contact your guys' administrative capacity for the reader to make those changes. And being our court security transport deputies would probably be included on the list sometimes, it can be a kind of revolving door. Um, so another option is, so we can look into that if that's feasible and we want to do that. Um, Clear Lake, for example, they're going away from their own system and the sheriff's office is investing a card reader into their building, um, but that's because we have a substation there with the computer and the record system that we have to securely control. Um, that's not the case for, for this building. So another option that we could do is a general, um, card that you guys control that's going to be hidden mounted somewhere on the property, on the building, uh, that we would have access to get into that, say it's a lockbox, a combination box, or a card in a box, that then we can take the key card basically out of that secure box to open the door and come in. So, a couple of options there, and I can talk with him and get, uh, a few more information, uh, pieces of information, but basically that's kind of what, into that would be easiest scenarios.
The box?
Yep, a lockbox containing a card that you guys control, and that we would have access to the lockbox.
And then that code for the locked box is what can be transmitted out to the deputies to note and give in.
Yep, and there's several options out there as far as like a combination one, which is nice, or it could be like a hard key, but then again, that's passed out to each deputy and then we have access to the key to get into the box. So, um, that can be a discussion, I guess, that you guys can kind of see what the best option is.
Well, if we could find out what his recommendation for the best box would be to be mounted?
Yes.
Um, and then we can look at that and then make a decision as to what level of security we're comfortable with and what kind of access we're comfortable with.
Do you, could I get, uh, information on your guys', I guess, who's ever in charge of the administrative access to the building? Is it you?
Yeah.
Oversees it? Okay, I'll just chat with you maybe on a later date. Um, he's happy to come up here too in person and chat with you and see if our cards would work on the existing readers and what that would look like. I'll let him know, maybe that, that's probably a best case scenario is that he comes up here and chats with you, just sort of kind of mull over the options and whatnot. Um, and he can maybe go over, uh, different lockboxes and stuff like that for the best option.
I was just going to say, my concern would be with the combination lockbox.
Yep.
Is, if the deputies switch, for these, they've got the combinations, we've got to change the combinations, we have to get it all up.
Right. Well, I'll have a conversation with Matt too, you know, I'll see how hard it actually is to like reach out to you guys to have different cards switched on and off. Um, but yeah, I'll relay that to him.
Okay.
Be in contact with Shelley and all that.
Fantastic. But I think from all the nods, we do want to keep pursuing this.
Oh, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, number five, open forum. Do we have anybody for open forum?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to stand up, you give us your name, your address, and, uh...
Sure. My name's Lisa Villan, I live at 23225-188 St. I'm on the east side of Eagle Lake in some of those old 1920s, 1930s cabins from long ago. And I'm just here because I, one, I appreciate that you're looking into easements and options because my neighbor and I have an easement between us, and we've both have been interested in looking at vacating easement because it's all green grass, we take care of it, we actually have an irrigation system that my previous neighbor, who lived there for like 15 years, put in until I moved to Costa Rica. Um, so yeah, and there's improvements we'd like to do, like there's a dead tree at the lake, we'd like to take it out, but it's not our property. No one uses it, it looks like grass, it doesn't look like old. No one, according to my neighbor, kind of used it in the past 15 years they were there, and I've been there eight years. So it just, I don't know, I'm just interested in is there are other options where we could take, we already mow it, we already weed whack it, we already take care of it, could we even improve it further by owning it, paying taxes on it? So that's just kind of, I just appreciate that you're looking into the easement because it's kind of been there for 100 years and we'd like to take better care of it compared to, so, that's all.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, we do, I did put that on the agenda. We have a couple of these requests from folks, including Lisa.
Oh, okay.
We got the, we got the address, too late to get it on the agenda, so I told Lisa if she wanted to come and talk during open forum, we can talk just specifically about some of the green ways, some of the options.
Okay.
And then, depending what happens during this month's meeting, we can get her back on, um, the agenda if we want to talk specifically about her scenario, if we kind of come to a resolution that allows for that during today's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Same name, name, address?
My name's James Gerard, I live on 25368-164th on the half-street. And there's a road, a township road called Jim Place, named in the 50s. Um, it's actually only my driveway, I own property on both sides of it, my house is at the end of it, the other house is, the other end goes the street, that's my house. And township does nothing to the road, but when it gets heavy rains, it helps wash it down, it washes down, down on my lawn. So, I'd really like to pave it, but it's not my property, so I'm just wondering what the rules are, can I have it vacated or can I pave it and leave it as a common road or township road or what can I do?
All right.
And Jim was one of the other ones that reached out, so I have three ongoing right now.
Okay.
One I know is dealing with Peter, he was here last month. We, again, got gems too late for this month, so same as the first one, we'll be discussing a lot of it today, and depending what happens, we'll put his back on the agenda if needed specifically.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on to number six, we have two different, uh, things. First, we'll do the June monthly meeting approval of meeting minutes. Are there any other changes that, for the June regular monthly meeting minutes?
Move for approval.
All right, Paul, is there a second?
One second.
Dalton, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. July special meeting, any changes? Motion?
Moved approved.
Dalton, second?
Second.
Paul, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, regular business. All right, we want to welcome our audit presentation this evening. I think all of us have our packets from them and our stiffy pens with the spinners on them. Um, and I don't think they're more than $5, so I think we're good to go and keep them.
This is from Data Success.
Oh, from, sorry, these are from Data Success. It's all yours.
All right, well, thank you for having us. My name is Molly Johnson and I'm a partner at 101 Company, and I also have my manager here with me, she's the manager, and we're here to present the December 31st financial statements. So essentially, we brought you three documents, the two bigger ones, the audit, the financial statement, and the report to the members of the governments are all summarized in one book, so it's all this book. So we're just going to go through that because both of those documents are so easy there. And we'll keep them short and sweet, you know, like, because I won't forget. Um, pretty high level what we go through here, but if you have questions, either while I'm on a slide, go ahead and somehow indicate that, I can answer them as we go, or you can wait until the end of the show. So the first slide here, this is just kind of a picture, we like to kind of explain how an audit works. So we have three phases, we have a planning phase, two are a phase, and then a write-up and wrap-up phase. Um, this, the little general procedures is really well with field work. So once we plan the audit, we're provided a trial balance by these two wonderful folks here, and then we begin to audit the numbers. So we read all of your minutes, contracts, agreements, um, we look at detailed testing for source documents, we do inquiries, analytics, and, and the whole point of all of that work is so we can issue an opinion on your financial statements. So we have kind of two different opinions, we have a unmodified or a clean opinion on your fund basis, so on your day-to-day, how you're recording all of your transactions for your various funds, so for your general fund, uh, road and bridge fund, fire, and your general capital projects. Then we have to take all of those numbers, combine them for what's called government lines, so the township as a whole, and on those, we have what's called a qualified opinion because many years ago, there were some new standards of opinion that, um, provide for or require governments to take their proportionate fair, proportionate share of para, for example, or fire the linked association liabilities and put those on your books. And you elected not to do that. So we have what's called a qualified opinion that basically explains that to users of the financials. There's no issue with that with the OSA or anything you're reporting to the OSA, they're fine with it. So the only time that it kind of can become a problem is if housing are going to do a bunch of debt, maybe someone out there in that world does a play a departure. Townships don't tend to take out debt like maybe cities do, so a lot of townships do exactly that, saves you some dollars. Um, the next two slides here are really about the report to the members of governments that you have on the table as well, and this is really our opportunity to just kind of tell you how the audit went in the main picture. Um, so the audit went very smoothly, we feel we have a very positive working relationship with both of you, even though you're both new, you guys did great, um, considering they got to go through the audit of the year they were not here. Um, we feel for you because we know that's not always fun, I keep saying next year will be better because you'll, you'll have been here, so, but you did a really great job. Um, no unusual transactions or accounting policies or treatments were involved either. And then this next slide is part of this communication, we also have to walk through any issues or findings we have around your internal controls. So we have four findings, and those are that we do help you with cash to accrual basis audit adjustments each year end, so nothing unusual in those journal entries, and the same as we typically see, not only for yourselves, but other similar entities we work with. And then because you don't record your para liabilities, we have to note that you have a departure from US cap, so again, very common. And then segregation duties, um, AICPA likes to say you need six accountants, if you want to segregate, you get all of your county, so you have two. So that's kind of, again, and you do a really good job for how many people you have, but you're never going to get out of that finding, um, just based on your operations. And then we also have to let you know that we actually drafted the financial statements and that they were helpful in this. So these findings, again, are the same as the prior year, same as probably 90% of our government client base, and nothing unusual that we related to any of those findings. Another part of the audit is that we have to test your compliance with Minnesota statutes, so the OSA puts out a bunch of checklists that we go through, um, we look at the contracting and bidding, deposit areas, conflicts and interest, claims and dispersance, and then catch all miscellaneous provisions. Um, and throughout all of that, the only finding we had was that your bank accounts were actually under collateralized by the 15,000 at year end, so it could be a change on January 2nd or 3rd, and it weren't, but it just all happened at 1231. Um, the next couple of slides are all going to be about the general fund. So what we have here is a four-year trend of your revenues in blue, expenses in red, and then your fund balance in green. And fund balance is really the health of the township because that represents, at 1231, closing doors, that's your assets plus your liabilities, it's less likely. Okay, so you can see that green bar, especially in the last three years, has really grown, um, so that shows some good financial strength going the township. And then on the far right, we've got your 2024 quarter. Um, so very high level here, the general fund ended the year to the positive about 88,000 this year compared to 1290,000 the year prior. Um, expenditures were under budget by about 17,000 related to general government expenses in that budget. And then revenues were over budget by about 1, or by 31,000 primarily related to interest income. So big picture there, and we're going to go through a little more detail on the next slide for your revenues. Um, so obviously you've got two bigger buckets here, your property taxes and then your interest in condo, restaurant, fairly small. Um, this year, your property tax has increased a little bit over the prior year due to collections and the living arts. And then on your interest income, um, similar outcomes for both years, but obviously compared to budget, budget very considerably, pretty interesting. And on the next page, was the same thing, general fund for your detailed expenditures, and really everything is in your general government area, and you'll see that you had an increase over the prior year, which is almost entirely due to actions. Um, this next slide talks about, for your general fund, you actually have a policy that the general fund balance, the unassigned portion, will not be less than 50% of the operating expenditures, and you can see you're ranging anywhere from 92 to 201 over the last five years. So you're well within, um, this metric, and that's actually in line with what the OSA recommends, so it's not like you have a unique policy or anything of that nature. Again, it points to the health of the township. Um, again, for just the general fund, your cash increased about 88,000 this year, so in the year, about 350,000 cash in the general fund at the end of the year. And then the next couple of slides are going to be for your remaining funds, so we have your road and bridge fund, your fire fund, and then your general capital projects fund. Um, obviously you can see from the bars, your fire and general capital projects are pretty minor funds. Um, so the road and bridge fund this year had a net change, an increase of 345,000. Um, that includes a transfer in from the general capital projects of 200,000, so a little bit skewed there because of the transfer. Your fire fund netted about 4,000 this year, and then your capital projects had an increase of about 21,000, again, including 200,000 in the road and bridge fund. And this, just similar to the other slide, shows your change in cash for these four funds, um, road and bridge went up by about 371,000, your ARCA fund basically was at zero both years, general capital projects decreased about 35,000, and the fire fund went up high about 50,000. So very high level. Um, the audit went very well, I really commend you two for all the hard work you put into it, like I said, I know it's not easy when they tell me they were asking the options and help me with the feedback report, um, so I can make sure if you left, that's for you, love you, but they did a really great job and everything has been neat and tidy and very responsive to our questions on this thing basis, and I appreciate that.
Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask?
The 100, uh, the December 31st?
Mm-hmm.
Where we were not 110%?
Correct.
That's not unusual because we receive our taxes basically late in December and, and our, our bank just hadn't...
Yep, exactly.
So is that something that in our December meeting, we need to contact the bank and say, this is the kind of money we're going to be receiving, and we need the letter on file?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of depends what your agreement is with them, how much of that responsibility is you versus them, they all have different agreements, but certainly I wouldn't be afraid as December 3rd is rolling around, to give them a call and say, hey, do you have a collateral, please?
Okay.
Because it really depends on the agreement, are you responsible, Paul, them, or are they responsible for it in place? So it really, it depends on the, but we, this, we find this finding a lot, just for that reason, because, you know, a lot of folks are giving a lot of taxes in December.
And it probably happens if you look at, in June, June or July, the same thing, when we get the first half of the tax.
Exactly.
But it doesn't get documented like that one.
Right, because it's not the end of the year.
So Kelly, maybe put a, a flag on your calendar to call the bank two weeks before the 31st and say, hey?
That way they'll be watching for it, and they can tick it off if they need to.
Okay.
Yeah. No questions?
All right. Anything else anybody? Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
You too.
I'm sorry, you have one other question.
Oh, sure, come here.
Sorry, make it longer.
Thanks, Paul, you're making me look good.
With the CD that we have and that they hold, that can be pulled out for the 110% because the feds ensure that, am I correct?
So how the 110% works is, let's just say everything's in one bank, because I think you have one, you don't have multiple banks. Let's just say you have one.
We have US bank, it's, it's our main source.
Let's keep it simple, so you have everything in one bank, you get 250 for interest-bearing accounts, 250 for non, and then you still need, so if you have both, you have 500 coverage there up to the balances, and then they have to collateral, have collateral placed for the renewal.
But the remain, if it's in a CD for six, six months...
So that would be under the interest, yep. And account just like a cash account.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
My question is, that's where we're at here for this month, because of the forum request.
Yeah, yep, yep, so I'm just talking with them and they should get that all stripped off, and there should be any...
I thought it was completely set.
Yeah. Any others?
Good.
Are you done?
I'm done.
I think we're done. All right, and the good questions, right, I just want to make sure because I'm going to let them know.
And we're always available, so if you think of something that could have been lost, I'll send them now, or I want to use...
Well, yeah, it was nice to be able to have some of this, you know, ahead of time, obviously, like we always do, we get a chance to look over it, and then your explanation has kind of filled in some of my gaps.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Good, well, thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to 7B, variance request.
I think we need to review that.
Oh, yes we do. Um, we have that form, or that's the one. Uh, look at, for a motion to approve the 2024 audit.
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Second by Paul, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, 7B, variance request. All right, um, Shelley, do you want to start with this?
Uh, this is a variance that Dalton asked me to put on.
This was not mine.
You didn't send this to me, tell me you put all this stuff on here?
I came from the...
No, a guy named Mike would have, from Sherburne County. I'm Cody.
Oh, you're Cody?
Yeah. This is the one, this is the one property thing that didn't come in.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay, all right, Cody.
Hold on.
All right.
Now...
This is a variant that needs, I sent you guys all the paperwork, and then we need to have you guys comment and then sign that.
Right, and then you sent us an updated septic.
Yes, and then I sent you the updated...
Updated septic, separate from the first packet that came.
Exactly.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. All right, has everybody had a chance to look at this?
So the septic, the septic design is okay? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm reading?
Yes, that's the, the second one, the first, yes. Yes, if it's the second one, yes, it's updated it is.
So right now, this is an empty lot except for that, except for that garage on it?
There is a shed on it right now, yeah, garage.
Again, Mike, with the technicality, on the first preliminary evaluation worksheet, it's not signed. There's a big X.
Oh, I signed those and sent it back to my septic guy, but I didn't know you needed him to sign it.
Oh, you supplied these, I thought this, okay.
Yes, no.
Some of it came from the county and some of it came from Cody, the updated ones came from Cody.
And then there was one other spot that was not signed also.
Probably on that same sheet of paper, he hadn't signed it through the box.
The county did.
No, septic guy didn't, yes.
When you go, when you go to the county, there's, I think there's a list of, like, there's eleven questions they ask. And one of them is there, is there, is there another alternative? And I think your design here is you're asking for eight and a half foot or nine foot variance because of the house design.
Correct.
Is there any way to change the layout of the house to alleviate the variance?
Not from what I had put together. I, how would you like me to change it?
It's your design, but I mean, you're going to have to face that question at the county. They're going to ask, is there, is there a possibility to change your floor plan to alleviate the, alleviate the variance?
It looks like it's just a pushout and the front fits the problem, the rest of the house is.
He can go laterally, you know, and again, I'm not, I don't want to design your facility for you. But you're going to have to ask that question at the county, at the, so just be, just be aware of it and have, and have an answer. Will do.
Any other insights? Brian?
No, I'd recommend positive, positive comments.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, concerns?
I was going to also note that building that is on there will be gone. So that's going away, I know building starts.
Oh, so you're tearing down the existing. Yeah, I know. Okay. All right, well, we will, is there an agreement for positive comments on the variance? Is there anybody who opposes or others coming? Okay. Did you want to stop and give this now?
No, I have it ready, so you're going to have to.
Okay, all right. I'll have to sign it. Do we, I don't think we need a motion, do we?
No.
No, I don't think so, no.
We just got some action.
Action would be, we'll get positive comments and I'll sign it.
Well, and then he's going to be on the docket for next month, correct, for the August at the county.
At the county, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll get the paperwork, the comment, paperwork signed and sent over to the county.
Thank you very much.
All right. Seven C, IT update.
So the tablets have been ordered, we have them, we have started programming them. They're just about done and ready for you guys to figure out how to use. And we'll be talking about that later. We will, me and Tony will finish them up and then we'll give them to you guys and make sure that you know how to use them. The security for the treasurer's computer is done, the town hall computer, security is done. Clerk's computer is all updated, except there's a couple more things that we have to do on my computer. And the town hall computer needs Windows eleven, but we have, because we have so many things connected to it, we want to make sure everything's going to be compatible with Windows eleven before we do it. And then we should be done, except case of emergency.
All right, nice job. And you said we're going to have that discussion about distribution of.
I'll let you know as soon as I get them, as soon as they are totally complete, and I will contact you guys on how you want to learn how to use them.
Pick up and, okay, all right.
Did we come in, did we have a financial cap on this, did we come in within it?
Yep, I'm still got, wrote it down even. Currently, I still have two thousand four hundred, approximately two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
So significantly under what we capped.
So far so good.
Nice work, nice work. And I do commend her, I mean, we've talked back and forth a little bit about everything that's been going on. I know this has been a huge project for you to do, so thank you very much for taking that on and getting us all set up. So much appreciated. Seven D, so Shelley, you sent, did you send this to everybody besides in the package?
Yes.
It was email from today, I believe.
Email, okay, right. So she asked if this wanted to be on the agenda and, and I didn't want to say no, I wanted people's opinion. We don't have, I mean, these are available. So if anybody has any interest, looking for competitive grants, some of it's reserved for townships. I mean, we don't have a grant writer, so I mean, there's that. But if anybody, especially in the road section of all of this, are interested in any of this that are now available to townships. So I just wanted it to be on here for discussion if necessary, or at least to make everybody aware. And if anybody knew anything or had any comments on whether this would be positive or negative for us to pursue.
Wouldn't hurt to have Kevin look at, and look at our future road projects and see if anything would apply.
That's kind of where I was going. So I think that we just need to agree if we want to, to give this over to him and say, can we get any of this? Because a lot of times there hasn't been money for townships. It's only been for state projects or county projects. And so having township roads eligible. So without any objection, I would ask Madam Clerk to forward this on to our engineering and see if any future projects can be tapped into any funds at all. Seven E, resolution, accepting donations, discuss and action. So this is for a motion to adopt a resolution to accept donations. Shelley, you want to give us some background?
So Chris very kindly donated this new picture for us. And it is in statute that anytime anybody donates anything, we have to do a resolution.
Oh, if I could have a motion to put the resolution accepting the donations in a second, then we can have any discussion.
I move to accept the donation.
All right, Dalton, on a second?
Support.
Okay, support, pick either one. I'll go with Brian this time, Brian. Have anybody, everybody had a chance to read through the resolution accepting the donation? And anybody have any questions about it or discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the donation of the print from Chris Weber, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, somebody say something.
Do we have to give anything to Chris for like tax reasons or something that she can use in her personal taxes?
Well, I would.
Not that I, not that I think.
Let's just make sure we send a letter, thank you.
Yeah.
And like maybe even a copy of the resolution and that probably would be sufficient.
Yeah, I mean, I think she can probably put it on there on her own, right, but just that she has it for her own.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, just that she has it.
All right, again, go back to the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, if we can, once I get the sign, once we get this all signed off for her, we'll make sure we get a clean copy to send to her.
Yes, I know.
Oh, you have a clean one there, okay.
I have everything ready for you to sign up.
Okay. Is, do we want Madam Clerk to write a letter of thanks from the entire board at your request? Or how would you like to handle that?
It's typically how it's done.
Okay, if you'll do that and then I'll come in, I'll come up and sign it. Perfect, moving on. Eight, easements. Skipping A, it has been removed, moving on to B, easement on one six three seven six, two hundred and thirtieth Avenue Northwest. And I think this is.
Yeah, he's next to my, so similar to this month, we had a resident reach out last month just before the meeting. So I encouraged him to come during the forum, who spoke then. So a couple of highlights, and Shane is in the back row.
Yep.
So a couple of highlights is, he bought a property recently. That's right before closing, found out that there is an easement for utilities and a drainage pond on his property. It encompasses both on the right-hand side there of the driveway, as well as that pink building is an outbuilding. So the house was built in ninety-one, I think, and has a permit for it. And the building is ninety-eight and also has a permit from the county. Neither time talked about the easement that is there. So that's how we ended up with a building and a driveway in the easement itself. The request from Shane is to vacate the easement. He has pointed out that he works within utilities, so he knows what can happen. If there's a utility easement there, that it can basically show up whenever they want and park a truck on his driveway right now because technically that's in the easement. They could also put any kind of utility box there because again, it's a utility easement. So his concern is that he has a building and driveway that basically couldn't be used for utilities or technically even a drainage pond right now. So that's where we're at right now. I don't know if we have any kind of precedent for this from the past where there was an easement there and the county has approved permits to build on it, but not called it out in the permits themselves.
So where's the driveway?
So this right here is the house, the driveway would come down here and curves a little bit, it's right on the edge of the easement.
Okay.
This is a big outbuilding.
That's the outbuilding.
Yep.
And that's the one that was built in ninety-eight?
Correct.
After the house was built in ninety-one.
Correct, I think the permit, Shane, I think the permit was from like eighty-nine, the house was in ninety or ninety-one.
Correct, right, initial permit for the home was issued in eighty-nine.
Yep, and then ninety-eight was the outbuilding, so two separate incidents.
What, I guess I was really lost. What is the, looks like a road that goes to the left.
So kind of road fifteen there?
No, up, this in the middle of the property.
Oh, this right here.
All the way across.
What is that?
That's just an offset measurement. I don't think there's, I don't think there's any easement there.
No, there is not.
There are just dimensions there, I believe.
Yeah.
That's just dimensions.
All right, I just thought it looked like, no, yeah.
Quite often on plats like this, you'll see easements in, within the property for drainage, purely of the low area one particular time. I don't know if it's, and it still is, because you see the garage is up two or three feet above the, above the property. I guess I'd recommend here, instead of vacate the easement, because it's going to create problems down the road for the utility folks. Give them a, we call it's a exception or a, I couldn't breathe, kind of a senior moment here. There's a form we fill out, except we not, we acknowledge that they're in the easement, we approve it.
We talked about that last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That should satisfy, that should satisfy the loaning, the loaning people.
So can I comment on that? Because that doesn't satisfy me. That still provides the opportunity for a utility provider to build in the middle of my driveway. And that's where I'm wondering, do we split it in half? Anything that was given by permit that he could build on is taken out of this easement and the rest of it stays there. So essentially, go down here and around, this would be removed from easement and the rest could stay. But then at least everything on that he is physically using that was a permitted use would stay.
How do you, how did you determine where that line would be?
Just based where the driveway is at and then around to the outbuilding. My thought is the county gave a permit for that, for both of those.
Obviously missed it, you know, that half was once in the hour.
Agreed, they missed it, but.
Well, it's there for a reason, I mean, the homeowner knew when he bought property that there, that's a, that's utility easement.
I would argue he didn't know. He found out five days before closing. At that point, you're kind of, you're kind of.
Again, as you're buying property, you should research, you know, the plan, see what's on it.
Sure.
Be that, be that as may, the easiest way from my perspective, just give them an exception to the.
But does that stop any kind of utility from being built there?
No, no, I mean, the utilities can still, that's why the part of it's there.
Hold on, hold on, let me, let me talk to our engineer, our engineer's here.
So you guys would have to permit the utility to go through there?
Correct.
They can't, you just go through there just because they want to.
Correct.
Yeah.
So if there's no utility through there now, and you guys agree not to have a utility go through there, unless it's for township purpose, like a drainage or something else along those lines.
And there's got to be utilities there now to serve the house.
But they wouldn't need to be, if it's serving the house, they don't need a utility easement for it. Private services don't have utility easement.
That's true, that's true, yeah.
Unless it's going to another house that's back in there, but I doubt it.
Yeah, we don't have the big, we don't have the big, we don't have the bigger picture here.
No, it's front easement, all your utilities are front easement on the property line, on the east side of the property there. That's where they're split. Okay, and obviously I have kind of road fifteen, right to my west. Nobody serves through the property, everything's on the front easement there, other than the gas, which comes in from rear. So the original purpose of that easement was strictly drainage. If that was still the case, I probably wouldn't be as concerned, you know, the county has since combined. And with, with their wording, all drainage is now utility easement as well. That's exactly what I got from the county, that's my bigger concern.
Well, that's typically how they do it, is to drainage utility easement, they, that's common practice.
It is not. When it was written up in nineteen seventy-nine, that's not how it was written. This lot, according to what was written in nineteen seventy-nine, should have never been developed. Should have been a holding pond right there. That was the purpose and that obviously never happened. That's why I'm asking for this to just match the rest of the easement along the road and be done with it.
Well, I'm not so much of my personal opinion, I'm not so much of the opinion of giving up the entire easement. I mean, we have run into some problems giving up easements recently.
Correct.
That we gave up years ago and now we've grown and now we have problems. So I'm not so fond of giving up a potential drainage pond piece there. We don't know where, clearly.
Hundred percent, I mean, we just had a special, a special meeting about it.
We just had a whole special meeting about it. So I, that's probably my personal opinion. Again, I'm not as experienced in this as you three and even me and Paul about this. I understand the concerns, I also understand what our engineer said. If we don't permit utilities going in there, there's no reason anybody's going to, no one can put anything there. They'd have to come through us first.
Correct.
And they're not going to come park in your driveway because there's an easement there, if there's no utilities there.
Correct.
Right, because why is a utility truck in my driveway? We have no utility there. We don't have a pole, we don't have a pump, we don't have anything there.
And that's fine, if, if it was never permitted for utilities, that's fine. I would like to get something to that effect in writing. Your comments honestly kind of frighten me, that you want to hang on to it to the holding pond in my driveway.
No, 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 I'm talking about giving up all of it. So I'm not talking, I'm talking about giving the exception to us saying, yeah, this piece over here, we give you the exception for all of that. But if we have an issue over here in the far corner on the other side, there's, there would be potential need for that. I, I don't know if you were at our special meeting, but we.
No, I, I didn't do a notification in time, so.
Had a huge issue about these things.
Well, we didn't talk about this, it's a different, if it's a different spot.
Different spots.
Would be honest, it's my understanding, we gave the easement up. Well, to be honest, it's my understanding, we gave the easement up, and now we possibly are going to be.
Have to buy it back.
Buy it back.
Because we're expanding roads, because our township grew, and now we need space. So I don't want us to get in that position again.
We ask you, and Kevin, what's your take on this one?
I, I would agree with what you guys are kind of sharing, you know, you can make an exception for the driveway and.
The building.
In the building.
There's plenty enough room there that we can still navigate if we had to do something for drainage purposes. I mean, obviously, we most likely never be looking at putting in like a formal pond, but you also still technically need the appropriate rights if that's where the roadway is draining to. Even if that's just a low area, it's not necessarily a pond, but even if your guys' water from 230th is draining into that area, if that's the low area, you guys would technically, you're technically supposed to have a drainage utility.
How big is this?
That's 10 feet, it's, um.
No, I don't know, 50 by, 50 by 50, I mean, it is, it's pretty sizable.
Probably even more than that.
No, I'm just, would like to get an idea of how big of an area this is.
The three car garage is 30 by 30.
Yeah, you're probably close to 100 by 100, aren't you?
The garage itself is 30 by 30.
That's a 120 square foot building.
Yeah. Encroachment agreement, that's the term I was looking for.
In big red letter or something?
Yeah, I just found it from his paperwork from last time. It's 120 by 100.
120 by 100?
Yeah, it's 120 high, 120 wide. Sorry, it's stuff that Shane provided last time I brought it back.
Okay.
Is where I'm finding that.
Oh, okay.
He gave to all of us last time.
Last time?
Yeah, yeah, last time. I just included the front.
Okay.
And your garage, your garage is hollow way?
The garage there, it's 30 feet deep, 39 north and south on that map.
30 foot?
30 foot east to west, 39 north and south.
100. One more time.
You're 39 feet north to south, garage, 30 feet wide.
Thank you.
So on here, it says that because the drainage pond is no longer practical, is there something backing that up that was on?
I, I think it's not practical where the building and where the driveway are. I think what we're saying is, the other halves of, almost where that circle is at, we technically could use. Because what Kevin's saying is, we might never put a drainage pond there, but you might have a little bit of a drainage area on the left side of that easement, which I think could still be practical.
In that far corner?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't want to expand the driveway or the, or the shed, I mean, we want to make that clear as well. I think that both sides of that, it looked to me when I was out there, that's, even though the driveway is still, there's still a retention, not a retention pond, but it's an overflow.
So I think it's kind of what Kevin's saying.
Yeah.
It's just a low area and the road's natural going out there.
And that's quite common in developments, you see that all the time.
So if, if we were to write a letter, or a document, and we file it, you get a copy of it, it's filed here, it's filed at the county level. That solves the problem.
If, I, I need an exception for the encroachment to get a clear title.
Right, so we, we have a form for exception.
Okay.
It's an encroachment agreement.
That would be, that would be.
Agreement.
Problem eight, right? That would be the biggest issue here for me. Secondly, I would like something in writing to never use that for utilities, other than to match the front easement with the rest of the road.
I would never agree to say never.
Yeah, we can't, because it's, right now it's titled as utility and drainage easement.
It's the county's designation of that, of that. We cannot say never. Now, I can tell you, and again, from the special meeting that we just had, we literally were moving roads one foot this way, two feet that way, to avoid these exact issues on people's property. We sat here for a little over two hours on a Saturday, going through maps and trying not to do it anywhere damaged than necessary to anybody's property. So at least with this board, and I can't imagine any future board, would say, no, well, let's just put it right there, because, I mean, that is not what we want to do. We are very much pro keeping what's yours, yours, and keeping what's ours, ours. So, but again, I, I personally cannot say never. I can say we would make every effort to limit what we can do, but, but if it happens, it happens. I mean, if that's our only placement of something.
Yeah, I don't even know what a utility contract or utility company would ever utilize that area for, and they can't get through. So I guess what's your concern on that front of, like, what's your worry that they're going to put in?
My, my concern would be a sack box, a cross box, a hub, right? It's a good place off the road, it won't get hit by a truck, or a fiber hub, or a cross box, or your cross connects.
So they have to own those, those don't go in right away as ever, or utility easements?
I disagree completely. Yes, they do. That's exactly what they're going to put them. And if they can get one that's set back where a car won't hit it, they'll do it every time, because that's where everything's right out. So that would be ideal. If I'm putting in a fiber hub, and I don't want it to get crushed by a truck that runs off the road, I'm putting it right there all day. I would hundred percent do that. And it won't be long before Frontier comes calling, because they're getting lots of hard off money to build a little town like this. So the door, you're going to get the knock on the door to put additional utilities out there. You've only got one real provider in this area for broadband. The next guy will come, and it will probably be Frontier or Verizon when they get the deals on. So it's going to happen. My thought is, I'm, I'm willing to give up where the garage and the driveway is, but after this special, special session, I just can't see giving up the whole thing.
So you're talking about 30 feet plus some.
Yeah.
footage past the 30 feet.
And you want to vacate, not do an encroachment exception?
It's either just to do an encroachment agreement.
That's what I want to, and the encroachment agreement, does that guarantee that he cannot, they can never build on his driveway, or make him tear down the garage?
It's all the encroachment agreement, says we acknowledge you're in our easement.
Correct, but at any point, we can come back and say move your driveway.
No, it says we acknowledge it.
Once we acknowledge it.
That's what I'm saying, once we acknowledge it, then we're saying, we can't go there anymore. It's not formally vacating it, but we're acknowledging.
Acknowledging that you're there, and we agree you can stay there.
But we're, we're saying you're not going to expand as well.
And I agree with that, I hundred percent agree with that.
That's all we're saying, is we acknowledge the facilities that are there.
So one other concern I have is, Shane, I'm looking at Google, do you have a paved driveway, or is it still dirt?
It's, it's still dirt today.
That's what I thought.
It's not going to stay that way.
So that's one thing that concerns me too, is are we saying he can't ever pave this driveway?
You can improve it, you just can't expand.
But he could pave what's there to the same width?
Yeah, you just can't, you just can't expand it.
Okay.
But I can never add on to that building?
No, you can add on, well, you can add on to the building outside the easement. Up the front.
No, the front's covered, the back's covered, the south side's covered. So as long as we can guarantee by the easement exception, or agreement, excuse me, that we're never going to make him tear that down or move this driveway, I'm okay with that, rather than vacating it. And I agree with Ryan, and you say it's not going to get expanded either, but I don't like the idea of not being able to pave it. So as long as we can allow those that are going to be paved, and that we're never going to tell them to move it, then I'm okay with not vacating. But if there's ever a chance, like you said, I never want to say never, if there's ever a chance that we say, no, you need to move your driveway, that's where I'm a bit concerned, because this is something that went through the county twice and was not caught.
So what's the process of, okay, this is a discussion here. What's the, what's the process of, if we don't come to an agreement about what's going to happen, what's an him attempting to have it vacated? I mean, that's a, that's a hefty cost. That's a hefty.
Well, chances are, it, I mean, I can't, I can't support it vacating it. One thing, it's, I'm just one person of the board.
Right.
One thing we got to vote on is, are we going to vacate it? If that doesn't pass, and the only other approach is the encroachment agreement.
Right.
We can have, we can solve Dalton's problem by, you know, having our attorney draft the language in the encroachment agreement as far as improving the driveway and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And I would be okay if that's, if that's what takes, what Brian's saying, is making sure it's in there that, hey, we're not going to ever make you move your building, we're not going to make you move the driveway. You can't expand, but you can improve. I'm okay with those doing it with an exception, or excuse me, that even agreement.
The encroachment exception.
Correct.
And he would be able to expand in the future, he would just have to come back when they're.
For variance, yeah.
Well, another encroachment exception, not a variance, because.
Yeah. Well.
We can't do, we can't do a variance.
Yeah, yeah, if you guys, you know, if you want to add 3 feet towards the road, and you guys go, yeah, that's not probably will impact our use, utilization of that area, then you guys can allow that to happen. It'd just be another encroachment agreement. Same thing would go for the driveway.
Well, it's, well.
He wants to widen the driveway by two, three, four feet.
Just easier to go the other way on the driveway.
Yeah, that's what I mean, he's got to go onto his property, not use more of the, of the easement.
So just so you understand, whatever agreement we would have drafted up, whatever is sitting on the property in its current form is approved. Anything else, I mean, inside the dotted line.
Yeah.
Anything else, if you wanted to expand the driveway the other way, which is not inside our easement, you wouldn't have to come to us. If they wanted to expand it further into our easement, they would have to come to us.
I think they'd come back, is that bottom tail where it angles out, that would be outside, like the driveway's fully in there by the end of the road.
Yeah.
But, but to Kevin's point, we can still approve that, if he comes back and asks. So there's one final thing I'm thinking, understood on those, definitely in support. Let's say a tornado or a fire hits that building, are we going to let them rebuild it in the current form? Is that, can that be part of?
It's a future issue.
That's a future, we, that's a what if.
That's a, that's a.
We could put us in our sentence all the way down there, so.
But that's what I'm wondering, is that something?
We'd have to come back, because we'd have to be seen with the footprint.
I'm saying in exact same footprint. So you keep the foundation, you build the stick and walls back up.
If he doesn't expand it, he can, yeah, if he doesn't expand it, it's fine.
So it's the same foundation, so I can build it, okay. Then I would be good with that.
The other, other issue is if we're going to have the attorney draft this, or it's going to be costly to associate it with it, the owner's probably going to have to pick those out.
It's an estimate. I, I can't get a clear title without this done, so whatever's got to be done, is got to be done.
Alright.
Do we have any estimate on what that cost, Brian may have some past?
Attorney, how much an hour?
500.
300 and something an hour.
275 an hour, I think.
It's probably going to be a thousand dollar bill if things are done.
So.
Yeah, I would make the motion to have that drafted, but Shane has to be able to approve the amount before it's actually done. So we'd have to ask for an estimate from the attorney, because I don't want it to be drafted, and then, okay, here Shane, here's a $2,000 bill.
About time you get a price, that's another month.
Is this one where it's appropriate to ask the resident?
Yeah.
Shane, what's your thought on that in terms of, it's going to have to be something drafted?
Wheels of government don't move fast, so it's on.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's, let's just go through motions, but I want to get a clear title, right? So I can actually ensure the thing, if there were a fire, that's, it's rather important to me. Some of the other things I'm still not super comfortable with, but this, this is the big step. So whatever we need to do, I, I would appreciate it if we can move forward with that, let me know what the cost is.
Do you want, do you want to put a cap on the cost?
No.
Okay, okay.
Alright. Well, I, I was going to say, I don't think he wants to.
If you can't ensure it.
And again, we have no cost involved, we'll literally get a bill from our attorney.
Typically, we have a, we have an escrow set up.
It's an escrow.
Thousand dollar something escrow.
And then moves it then.
We could do that.
Okay, credit card we can get is now.
Anyway, that's, that's, I think Dalton, you, you made the motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second that, let's get that handled then.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we want to do a thousand dollar escrow? Okay, so we'll do a thousand dollar escrow.
And Shelley, can you handle that? Is that something that can be handled tonight? Or is that something that has to be?
You can handle it after the meeting.
After.
That's what I mean, after the meeting, but still tonight.
We'll figure, we'll figure it out.
They'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. Alright. You done with that one?
Yep.
Okay. Since we have him here, back here. It's the engineer, when we were talking about the other one.
Alright.
Yes, I just took them all.
That one, that. Thank you. We are going to give you that document and see if we qualify for anything.
Yeah, I'll check it out.
Check it out, okay.
Form check, you know, for all of our clients, so.
Okay.
It's just got to prove, so we don't really know the full, yeah.
All the, all the tips and tricks.
Typically, we see in this fall that they'll actually release like the formal application process.
Okay. Alright, we'll just keep this on your radar, please.
Will do.
Alright. We're moving on to C, easement for drainage use on 233rd Avenue Northwest. We heard back from our lawyer, or WSB on.
We did, so Shelley did let me know. We heard back from the lawyer, based on Brian's question of, do we lose the easement if we don't use it for so many years? What Shelley heard back is, is the easement is our easement, so unless we formally vacate it, we still have access to that.
So if it's platted, if it's platted, we're okay?
Correct.
Is it platted, that's, that's the question. Is it platted? Okay, we still.
Yeah, this is a platted area.
Alright, okay.
So we're, we're back to, unfortunately, Daryl's not here. I know Daryl and Kevin went out there to assess the situation in terms of drainage. So the drainage would be up in this corner right here. So this is the side that moves around, this is the resident that was talking about the drain, or the drainage problem, this driveway, the weight is down here. So it's draining across the street into this lowland area behind, there was the, probably, I believe, Kevin?
Yeah, so I can kind of tell you, so, so the problem is, right now, the water is how it used to function, from talking to some residents out there. So it pooled up here, and then it kind of flowed across this, this residence property, and they had it graded to do so. He ended up putting some filler, whatever else he ended up doing in there, it never flowed actually all the way to where you guys actually have easements, or right of way, actually. So now this is holding up water, it actually overflows here, and it's a whole disaster. The problem that we're kind of running into, though, on just being able to grade this backwards to that area and get it to go down to the wetlands, is this edge of the road, without knowing for sure, based off aerials, at least on the county GIS, it's like right on the right of way property line. So we'd have prescriptive rights beyond the right of way line, but the issue again is, there's not a lot of real estate there to utilize. And based off of how much water is pooling here, we're talking like a foot and a half to two feet that would be cutting down.
Okay.
So to try to ditch this all the way back and out would be challenging. And basically make this back portion of this gentleman's property almost impossible to use, if we stayed within the right of way. If we graded it out a lot further, and he got, he has permission to do so, it would be a lot different of a story, but to maintain it in what we have, it would be very much so. Straight down, straight back up, you'd never be able to drive across it, at least on the far end. The other option that we're kind of discussing was putting some sort of catch basin in here, running it down, but again, we basically have four feet of right of way to work with to put that in.
So I think we talked, we talked here, well, there's two issues here. One is the property owner created his own problem by, by burping up around his property.
I disagree.
That's number one. Second one is, we were looking at, when we redo the road, put in catch basins appropriately, and then, and then dump it into the.
The wetlands.
Into the wetland area.
I'm going to repeat that. The water pools up on this side over here, and it's not until it overflows the entire road that it gets to this berm here. This berm is what Brian's talking about, the road flows this way.
I think you're talking about this property here that.
No, he's talking about.
One in the end.
Which side, the west side or the east side?
Uh, it would be the south side. See, Dalton, see where that junction box is right there?
Yep.
He's burned, he's burned that area, and he's also burned between the two homes.
Yeah, depending on which resident you talk to, you get a different story on whether it's a root causing problem.
But the root causing problem is right here. Water flowing down here, and this road goes across this way.
Yeah, everything is still.
Everything drains that area, yeah.
Correct, and it's not, it never reaches this berm until the entire road is flooded. So he is not creating the problem.
Yeah, the issue is that it doesn't have a way to get out through this property anymore.
Yeah.
Which it used to.
And that guy, it used to, and that guy filled his property.
That guy filled it down. And the resident who built the berm has pictures to show that the other guy filled it.
Two residents said he did, and one said, and he said he didn't, so.
Yeah, so he said, she said, not you said, if we need access from, or permission from that guy, you're not going to get that.
So the guy that he said, she said, is the guy we have to get permission from to fix the problem?
These two spoke during the one meeting.
Yep.
They are saying that that guy filled it. This guy here is the one who filled it in, and Kevin's saying we need permission from him, I can tell you that I've talked to all three of these guys multiple times, he's not going to get permission.
The only thing that would maybe be a little bit different is we could ask him just for a right of entry. That would allow us to get in and get the pipe put in. Wouldn't necessarily be able to re-dig that pipe back in. But you would have enough, like you guys have enough prescriptive rights that you can put the pipe in. The problem is I can't. There's not enough room without ripping up a bunch of the road to actually install it. Because your impact from your trench that you're digging will impact into his property that you don't have rights to.
And that's what Brian was going with the catch basin, is if we're going to do that, the road just almost needs to be replaced.
So if we want to move, if we want to move the road construction up a year or two, that's fine.
Unless, unless we're able to. Unless you're able to get like a right of entry.
Yeah, you're going to have to do it, do it when we've got to redo the road. We can move the road up if you want to move it a couple of years up, that's not a big deal. But if you're going to do it right, do the road, get the drainage the way it works.
Well, I mean, you could still do, if you were able to talk this gentleman into doing a right of entry, which I think if you were talking that your plan was to, I don't think, he just doesn't want his property re-graded or touched. So I think if you told him that your plan was to put a catch basin in here, run a pipe down to where you actually have the right of way that goes down to the wetlands, there's another little structure there just to change directions, and we run it down that hill, that solves the problem. You just need to get a right of entry from him so you can grade. You know, once you put everything back together, you can put it back in the exact way it is almost, you might want to lower the goal point just a little bit. But you could put it back exactly the way it is, reseed it, and be done.
If you got erosion problems where you dump it down the hill, you've got to have some kind of erosion protection.
But you guys have, you guys have all that rights. Once you get to the hill, you guys can do whatever you want back there, you can rip rap it.
Yeah, we have a full easement there.
You have your full easement there.
But you just got, I mean, that's.
We just got to.
What I'm saying is it's a cost, it's a cost.
It is a cost, yep. But you'd be doing that no matter when you do the project. You do it now or in ten years, five years, two years.
I was going to say, that road's in pretty good shape yet.
It's not bad.
It's not great, but it's not.
Yeah.
And all three of those residents have both said, or all three have said, we don't care if it's replaced right now or not, like it's not bad enough that they're complaining about the road itself.
I'm sorry.
All three of them, so even though they're disagreeing on the situation, they're all saying, well, we don't need to replace the road right now.
Yeah, they don't.
Like it's not, it's not in great shape by any means, but.
What I, what I.
Yeah, it's not in great shape, but it's not terrible either. It can easily, easily.
But if once we go in there and start tearing it up.
Then it's the Brian's.
It's going to, it's going to creep.
Does the guy, the he said, she said guy?
There's a lot of he's and she's on that.
But I'm this guy over here, does this guy, is he complaining about the water in the road too?
Kinda.
Yeah.
Kinda, but not as much as the other people.
He's complaining, but it's not a big enough of an issue for him.
To be helpful.
Yeah.
Cause the other two people, they're getting into their houses.
They're getting flooding.
I mean Dalton, you might have, when I spoke with this gentleman, I think if you told him that the only thing that we need from you is a right of entry just to put this pipe in, it won't be like, you know, it'll be on the edge of your property.
But we need to come on your property to do it.
Right, it'll be within our right of way, it's within our prescriptive rights, whichever way that ends up being there. I think he would agree to that.
Yep.
He for sure is not going to agree to letting you grade it. But I think if you told him that you're putting in a catch basin with a pipe to a catch basin, or to another pipe, running it down the back of the here's hill, he would be like.
And if we got permission, rights, permission rights to go in and do that, we would not have to tear up the road.
No, cause you could just dig everything from the edge of the road.
Other than over.
Of course, his property.
Are you willing to go ask for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's not got combatant or anything.
No, no, he's.
Yep.
He's got a sewer line, he's got a drain field right on the.
He does have drain fields.
It's actually further back that he realizes though, from, at least based off of the caps that I was able to find. Unless there's one that's hidden, but the caps that I was able to find, they shouldn't be a problem.
Do we know what this costs for us to do this?
Assume about a hundred and fifty bucks a foot. Whatever that one does, so it's not going to change.
Fifty, or fifty-four or something like that, a little more.
I think it's almost like a hundred and fifty.
To get adjusted, when you're talking down.
Depending here to here and then.
And, oh, you're talking down too, okay, I was talking to fifty or something to get.
You could, you could look at regrading that easement area, but.
But if you're saying it's too steep, then it's too steep.
Well, it's fine, it just kind of goes up and then back down.
Oh, you're talking in the easement itself, not the, not the road.
So if we just took the top off? Just take the top off?
You could, by the time you get to, you know, you'd have to get, go far enough back to daylight the pipe. But as soon as you daylight the pipe, yeah, I'd recommend just letting it.
Letting it go.
So my question is, can we reuse all of this when the road eventually gets done and build the catch basin?
Yeah, this would just be installed separate, almost, like.
So almost.
If you widen the road, great, you might have to adjust the casting and elevation a little bit, but you would then have to replace the pipe.
Okay, so almost all is reusable, there's, to Ryan's point, we're not just spending a bunch of extra money to land it.
No, you're just moving the timeline up.
Sure, but not.
Well, half the timeline.
Half, but not as relevant.
Yeah, you're just moving the storm portion of the.
The storm portion of it.
My suggestion is Dalton, why don't you get with Kevin, the two of you just go there and present it.
I was going to be trying Peter along.
Pardon? Well, that's fine, that's fine, yeah, I just meant have the engineer there.
Well, and that's the thing, now it's not just the town suggesting this, we do have an engineer too, so if you're willing to do that, Kevin.
Yeah.
And then we can come back and you can have a.
Like I said, the guy hasn't been combative, he's been nice enough, they're all pointing at each other, so I've heard every angle of this story possible.
But I'd like to help them not flood their houses anymore.
Correct, and even the people.
Sooner than later.
Like I talked to a fourth person on that road, and they complained about how like the road is flooded too, but not enough to care and come up here and save them.
They say it's very, it's dangerous, especially in the spring, you know.
Well, I was going to say, spring and winter, and the thought, it's got to be icing.
We had that picture, that's the one resident.
The one resident with the icing, yeah.
Yeah.
What, if we got all this agreement and everybody, yep, go ahead, do it, what's the timeline on getting that done?
That would depend on how, so it depends that I can run, I'll run some numbers quick as soon as I sit back down. If it exceeds, which it won't exceed enough money to that we need to get it actually competitively bid. It for sure won't be that much, but you might have to get just like, you might have to solicit quotes.
Okay.
But if we solicit quotes, I mean, I wouldn't even do like a plan set or anything for this, I'd just tell them, you know, catch basin here, catch basin here, build a pipe, here, here, down the hill.
So I guess asking different, can it be done before winter?
Yeah, I mean, I could draw something up on a piece of napkin paper and give it to a contractor to give me a number on it. Interesting matter, when they can get in, but.
See if we can buy it.
Well, let's see, let's see if we can get.
We're just speaking to thumbs, and maybe they won't agree to it, and we got another discussion to come.
Yeah, we got a bigger problem, yeah.
All right, so let's get that.
Yep.
Meeting done. And the only reason I was asking those questions is if we find out in two days that everybody's agreeing on this, I would rather not wait thirty days to try to get some information about cost and availability and timeline. That's the only reason I brought it up.
You guys want to make a motion to allow someone to quote?
I think so.
If we get a agreement.
If we get the right of entry?
If we get the right of entry.
Get the right of entry first, see what we are.
Yeah, but I think what Kevin's saying is then we don't have to go to the next meeting.
Right.
So if we make the motion.
I can get a quick sketch thrown together of something. Hit it enough that Darrell and whoever else we want to ask for a number on it from.
Pay attention to the erosion control down there bank, because it's pretty steep.
Okay, word it out.
Yeah, no, I'll make the motion that myself, Peter, and Kevin go to talk to the resident to see if we can get the agreement to enter his property. If he's agreeable, then Kevin will solicit the bids.
I would do an amendment, maybe amended, if you name all three and all three can't go, then you have a problem, so one or three of us, including.
A combination of.
A combination of.
A combination of at least one of us.
Brian should go, he's the other person on the road coming.
Then you'd have to know.
Then we have to have.
No, I'm saying if one, just let, just let Kevin and Pete go.
All right, let's go.
At least one, at least one of those three.
Okay.
Can go.
Do I have a second?
Just second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Did that mo, I'm sorry, did that motion allow him to do plan?
Yes, plan, solicit it.
That's what I thought, okay. Moving on, greenways.
So we have had three different people between me and Peter reach out about easements that are between properties going down to the lake. So we've heard about two of them here today. There was a third last, or a last meeting. And they're all asking basically two questions, I guess three. How are people supposed to be using these and like who's managing it? If there needs to be improvements made, who handles it, the resident or us? And then kind of the third one is what Jim's having, and I think what the other resident that Peter's working with, is it's basically on their driveway. And it, either they want to make improvements or it needs improvements, and again, what are they able to do compared to what should we be doing? So the map that I included here, let's tackle the first one, the recreational stuff. The map I have here is from Big Lake and Big Lake Township. They have multiple greenways along Mitchell and Big Lake available to the public. Some of them allow boats to be put in there, some allow for snowmobiles, some allow just walking, and obviously you can put a kayak or a canoe in there. They have benches there, they have trash cans there, they're being actively managed by the towns. They have signs up there that says what's available, what parking's, where you can park and things like that. I think as a township, we need to kind of acknowledge that we have some of these on both Eagle and Ann Lake, but we don't have any kind of policy around them. We don't have any kind of signage that says it's public property. We don't have anything where we are managing in terms of mowing, or if there's gravel there that we are managing the gravel. We're kind of pushing it on the residents right now. And we are getting questions from the residents saying, should I be doing this? Can I make improvements? And on the flip side, I have gotten calls from two different residents saying, hey, can I use these? But we don't have any kind of policy to figure on how we need to manage these, who does the maintenance on them. So we are getting requests from people like Lisa to say they would like to vacate. We are getting requests from people like Jim that either vacate or it needs to have improvements made. So I guess my question to the board is, do we want to handle these on a case by case basis, for one? Or two, do we want to start doing more blanket style policies where like Big Lake, where we start managing these and kind of advertising these, that people can actually use them? Knowing that some of these are on steep builds and are not actually usable.
Do we even have a map of where our, our cars are?
We looked on, that was a motion, I think months ago, and I don't think we ever got it. I don't know if it was, who it was for, I don't know if it was studied.
I think that was for our road construction, but I think, and you're parking up the right tree before we do anything. Let's identify these areas on the two lakes, and see how big of a problem we do have.
Yes.
And we can.
Let's start there, and that's something Kevin can do. And start there, see where, see where, what are big the problem is, and then we can go from there.
I know during the annual meeting, this came up, again, and one of the gentlemen in the back pulled up on X, and he counted five, just on the west side. So I don't know how many total there are, but we know at least five on the west side. I think adding to what you were saying, Ryan, is one, how many are there, and two, I think we need to kind of get some kind of pictures of what they look like too.
And some of them on the east side of Eagle Lake, I think they're private access.
Those, yeah.
Dedicated to the lots that aren't actually on the lake.
Yep. Yeah, and I don't think those are similar to the ones here, these ones aren't shared accesses. But I do think what you're saying is getting a full inventory of them, but not even just a count, what do they look like? Is it possible for the public to use it, or is it just a straight down, and the only reason we would use it is for like drainage?
Or are they actively being used, I mean, are people walking in on them and putting in their kayaks, or are they doing something on those?
Yep.
So if we can get the map of those, I make a motion, and nobody minds, that we have our engineer create a map of our greenways on Ann and Eagle Lake? Can I get a second?
Support.
All right, and any discussion?
Which one?
I'll give it, I'll give this one to Dalton. Did you second it?
I didn't.
Oh, Peter, Peter, Peter seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So good, that's a nice project, we really need to get a handle on.
We do, and I think.
Some of these things to answer some of the questions that people are having and.
Correct.
We move into maybe, you know, adopt a thing, or whatever.
Adopt, or like in case of like Jim, or the one that Peter's working with, we need to do case by case and figure out what needs to be done there.
Yeah, and maybe do, maybe we don't want to give it away, that we'll give you permission to mow it new.
Yep.
All right, well, we're moving forward, so we will get some answers for some people here. All right. Roads, tree trimming update, nine A. Report by supervisor Owen.
That's me. I've been working, working slowly, I've done a lot of baseball playoff tournaments, but with Darrell on getting some tree trimming, we're going to go do some more tree trimming tours. I do not have a bid yet from him. I will have it for the next meeting, but I also have to meet with a couple of other residents that have some areas to, and I want to meet with them to see what we can do to tree trim in their areas. Some of them are all around stop signs, some of them are safety issues. Where you pull up to a stop sign, you look to that direction, and all you see is a tree there. You don't see the road, nothing, so I still have to meet with this one resident about that. So next meeting, I will have a bid from Darrell to go forward. It doesn't sound like he does any tree trimming until the fall anyway, so.
He can't start till after middle of August, I think for Oakwell.
Yeah.
Unless we have an emergency of some sort that's a safety concern, and we have none of that? Okay.
The other thing, don't forget Pete, is once you identify the areas that need to be tree trimmed, the, we should be sending letters to the property owner letting them go to the end there.
I'm, yeah, I'm going to work on that, but this one particular property owner, I want to physically talk with this person. And I want them to show me basically what we can do to help this person clean this area up. And I want them to show me basically what we can do to help this person clean this area up. Because it's, it's really encroaching on the road a lot. And she's asked me to, you know, what can we do, you know, and I told her, well, we'll go six feet back, six feet up. She says, well, what if we get rid of these trees because they're dying and stuff like that? So I want to basically meet with her and try to have this good feedback, whether or not we can help her out in any.
They're pretty good about trees are.
These are in our easements.
Okay, if trees are outside these, well, they like to have you.
These are all in our easement, right?
Trust me.
If you took from the road, can you take it out?
No, they will be in our easements.
Okay.
We, we trim higher than six feet though.
You said six feet in, six feet up, what, or was it to the sky?
Well, our previous policy is six feet off the edge of the road.
Off the edge of the road?
Yeah.
But to the sky?
Yes, to the sky.
Okay.
All right, as long as it's in our easement, then I'm good.
I know, I lost the tree because it, it went to the sky.
All right. Okay, moving on to 9B, pothole patching update. We are back with Supervisor Owen.
And once again, I'm human, I messed up. I didn't read the plan print on this. And we need to have half down in order to get on the books for pothole patching. So me and Shelley kind of work back and forth on that. So in order to do that, and then I also have been in touch with Eli on this and we're probably a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks out as far as getting the work done once they receive the half down on the estimate.
It's in our bills that we just approved, isn't it?
I was gonna say.
Yeah, we just, we just approved it.
We approved the whole.
On the consent.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the consent.
He's just letting you know that it needed to be.
Why it's there and why we're doing this. Okay. Next time, just for clarity, bring that during the consent agenda to marry those two. So, all right. Number 9C, West Eagle Lake Road Improvement Update. Seven Prover, well, give us an update.
Yeah, so is there anyone here for that area at all?
Okay.
No.
I wasn't, wasn't gonna waste too much breath on what, how our meeting went.
Right.
Because there wasn't anyone here for it. So we're still working away on the plans. Everything that I discussed was, is just kind of being added in. And we'll keep chipping away at those. Everything seems to be working okay with what we kind of discussed of narrowing up when we needed to, widening when we're able, shifting things a little bit here and there. So all that should be good to go. Paul and I have a date with the resident to discuss the drainage and soot easement.
Two residents.
Two residents. Oh, you both from the same day?
Yeah.
Wow.
We're both gonna be.
I, I assumed it was just one of them, but.
No, and both, both property owners.
All right, perfect.
We need to save money, do it all at once.
Right, so. So yeah, that's kind of all the really moral updates we have at this point.
Well, it's good to hear that the things that we came up with and, and discussed in that meeting are now, you haven't found any flaws as you start to go forward.
No, nothing, not, no one glaring holes yet, so.
Good work, all right, fantastic. Board Business Updates and Committee Reports, Adams.
Uh, nothing.
Ellinger. I'll skip myself for now, Owen. Ketterling.
Nothing.
All right, I, really nothing. I went to the county fair, hung out there for a little while, saw a lot of the exhibits. Sure, it's fun, interesting. Other than that, really no. All right, Treasurers Business, 11A.
So balancing came up, just find no differences or anything there. The state bank checking, debit card and that kind of thing. The CD I just left from the last month, we didn't close it out or cash it out or anything like that. So we just renewed that for another reaching of term.
But for only the 250?
Yes.
And you turned the other amount into the, the general fund, correct? You didn't renew it for 261?
I think it was just what it was. I will have to check on that.
Okay.
And then, so with that, you can see there's one deposit from US Bank and stuff that was put in there, reseeded, and there are two waiting for that to kind of clear. And then with the interest and stuff on that, so I've been balanced out. Do you have any questions on that or anything for me? And we'll check on the, the amount on that CD.
Do you need a motion to approve?
Is that you, Brian, are you giving us the motion on that?
I'll, I'll move, approve.
All right, Brian, second? Peter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Treasurers Report B.
With the Treasurers Report, I believe I have the correct dates in there correctly now. We likely at least have for the current month with the schedule one. And then the following reports there with the general fund and each fund's kind of going with the actual throughout the end of the year. So those reports should show you where we're at. Because I know last month I had, only did it for the month rather than for the year. So that shows all of it. Is there any questions on that one? I'm the one who's looking for approval.
Motion to approve the Treasurers Report?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Report of June Sherburne Bank Securities Pleasure Validation, this is for review, no motion needed.
So with this one, for the end of June, there is a short amount on that one. I did call the bank and that was just because of our signed document acknowledging that. That just didn't get in at the same time of the 30th, it was kind of an overlap there. So otherwise we are covered and secured for that, but that's the reason why it's reporting the shortness on that.
So they covered it after your call?
Yeah, otherwise it's covered, the document and stuff came in, it just kind of came in towards the end of the month or, you know, right there. That's the reason why it shows up as a short. But we should be good, covered going forward. And that was the document we kind of signed last.
So according, go back, because according to this, it looks like the CD rolled at 261.
No, yeah, it was my balance, so.
Okay, but you're not sure whether or not.
I will have to check on that one, yep.
Okay.
But that was at least the balance for the June 30th.
Okay, and we don't know if, okay. But wouldn't we have shown somewhere where that money would have been deposited?
Yeah, and like I said, I didn't, I didn't change or do anything with it for myself. Because that's what I was instructed is it just would roll on its own if I didn't do anything. So that's what I did. I didn't do anything with our last meeting and stuff like that, like no true movement for it, so.
And it was for how long?
For 13 months.
13 months? Maybe that level's out, it's not insured.
Right. Though that 11,555 is not insured.
I will check those for bank on that.
I think that's why we pulled it.
That's what it is, yeah.
Yeah. We pulled the balance.
And we use them to get a better rate.
Yeah. Um, okay.
What's the rate right now for the CD? Because I know rates are per dropping, so now is the time to kind of lock in a CD.
He's locked it in.
We're locked now.
But it, but it's a, it wasn't about.
Well, you, you locked it at what?
3.69.
Okay.
But to your point, Paul is pulling that 11,000 out to make sure it's insured. Because we can get a better rate, I'm not sure we will long-term.
I don't think we will either, it's just not insured.
It's just not insured, but I just want to make sure that's known, that I don't get a better rate this time.
That's why I asked the question of the auditors.
Yeah. But no, I just want to clarify, I don't think we're gonna get, for the next year, we're not gonna get a better rate on that uninsured stuff. It's just moving to make sure it's insured.
Correct. Correct. Okay, any further discussion? August Board Meeting is Wednesday, August 27th. That's my birthday. The moment. Oh, okay. B, the tour, there's a flyer in here about the tour. Again, I said this last time, it's on August 28th. This is a phenomenal tour, especially if you've never done one before. You get on a bus, they set, give you lunch, it's free, you just gotta sign up.
They teach you soil stratification.
They teach you soil stratification, if you're still interested. And it's a great way to get to know your soil and water conservation district's staff and their department. It is a really good tour. And again, a special thank you to Chris for donating the photo at the town hall. We now have the before and the after, and hopefully we won't have to do a third ever for this. I'm getting there, yeah. So, and adding on to that, we had Investment Update here. Did you want to?
Yes.
Kelly, address this.
So, yep, so the, you have an updated sheet in front of you with the investment updates. So it's just showing the correct July claims with the new added adjustments for the $3,000 additional claims. And then that's where I'm requesting to transfer money from the checking to the money market for that 132,739 dollars and 33 cents.
So.
All right, so, all right, yeah, second? Second, Peter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Peter, second? Non-debatable?
Support.
All right, we are adjourned.
10:33.